Five thirty, I call our city council meetings to order. Third item of business is to pledge allegiance and Councilwoman Leanne Durfee will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and thankful I am, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is David Whitehead, Chris Joseph, Elias and Ina.
Please, thank you. Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you once again for the desire of this, the citizens of this city, to elect government officials that would not only allow but encourage pastors and spiritual leaders to invoke your favor on our city. We thank you that you have named us, you have claimed us, and you have led us, and all we did was say yes. We thank you, Father, for the common grace that has fallen on all of the city and the citizens of it. We thank you for the common good that is being pursued with great transparency and integrity and passion. And we thank you that even though we didn't know till afterwards, we can look back and see, we've been led. And your ways are good, your judgments are kind, and you're a gentleman. So we thank you, Father, we thank you for the recent rains, we thank you for the incredible abundance. We pray, Father, that we would learn the hard lessons of trusting you in the abundance as we learn to trust you in the lack. For the faith is the same. We thank you for all of this, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, David, it's always good that we know not only y'all come up here and pray for us, but we know you pray for us all the time.
Yes.
We appreciate that very much.
Not me, the others.
The city council.
Yeah, that's right.
Council's prayers. Well, tonight, we have a special event, that's why I'm standing out here, I want to call Richard up here, our municipal judge. Come on up here, I'm staying here for a few minutes. Get over here. Richard is retiring from being our municipal judge here in Stevenville, and he's our first municipal judge. Been here four years, is that right?
Yep.
Four years. So we want to recognize him for his service in the city of Stevenville, and I have a proclamation, I want to read about Richard. And also, I have something the city wants, the city council wants to get to as well.
Thank you.
Richard and Janice have been married for over fifty years, is that right? It's a long time. How does she put up with you? I thought that was right. He's the proud parents of Renee, Kelly, and Richie, they're all here tonight. And we have, they have five wonderful grandchildren, Brianne, Alex, Scarlett, Campbell, and Keen, is that correct? They're all here celebrating with him, now I'm going to read a proclamation about Richard. We're here today to pay honor and celebrate the dedicated selfless service by Judge Richard Petronas to the citizens of Stevenville, Texas. And Richard Petronas was born in Perth, Amby?
Amboy.
Amboy, New Jersey, into a military family. He was a distinguished military graduate and commissioned a second lieutenant at Arkansas Tech University, with degrees in business and economics, that's high school and law, right? He holds a law degree from the University of Arkansas, completed his master's of law work at the University of Mississippi. Richard served over twenty years in the Army, first, I think we figured out, it's twenty-three. Okay. First stationed at Fort Hood, Texas, and then did a tour in Vietnam, thank you for your service. After a short break, he served the Texas Army National Guard, retiring as a lieutenant colonel after twenty-plus years, twenty-three years of military service. Richard started his career as professor of business law at Charleston State University in nineteen eighty-eight, retired in two thousand fourteen. At TSU, Richard helped establish the Coppa, Coppa Delta Row fraternity, served as their advisor for over twenty years. He was recognized by the National KDR fraternity with the highest award of honor, and the TSU Zeta Beta chapter established a national scholarship in his name. Richard served the citizens of Stevenville in various offices, first as a council member, two thousand, two thousand four, and we don't know what that's like. And then as a municipal court judge from nineteen, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. Richard also started the Knights of Columbus at St. Brendan's Catholic Church, was the president of the Stevenville Rotary Club, where he began the Leaders of Tomorrow recognition and scholarship program for area graduating high school seniors. He also served on Stevenville City Committees, as well as the boards of CASA and Star Council. On behalf of the city of Stevenville, City Council, I want to express my sincere appreciation for Richard for his exceptional service to the city of Stevenville, and wish him much happiness and success as he begins his new chapter of his life. Now therefore, I, Doug Svein, Mayor of Stevenville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October tenth, as Richard, Judge Richard Petronas. And the city of Stevenville urges all citizens and city employees to join me in congratulating Richard for his outstanding career with the city of Stevenville, and wishing him many continued years of happiness. One more thing to hang in your office at the house. As municipal judge, Richard Petronas, this was his gavel. Did you ever hear anybody on the head do that? Thank you very much for your service. Now, Richard said he has something he wants to say, it'll only take about five minutes. Don't promote it here, so we can get you on record, on a recorder.
It's long. Okay, first of all, Mayor Doug Svein, city of Stevenville staff, city council members, I just wanted to first say that it has been an honor to be able to serve as your municipal judge. I express my thanks on behalf of myself, but most importantly, I express my thanks with regard to my family. I think we all appreciate those that serve in these capacities in city government or elsewhere. That is, that support that you get from family that keeps you going, and that's, that's exactly the way I feel, and I appreciate it very much. I've got, I've got a hell of a family, let me tell you, they're, they're really good. Also want to express my sincere support and thanks to whoever my successor, I still haven't found out if they're,
We don't know yet.
They've got a successor. I'm still available, no.
On a per diem basis.
At any rate, I want to, whoever that successor may be, I want to pass on my support if I can help in any way. And I'll support that particular individual in any capacity in which I may be able to serve. But, long story short, I'd just like to say, you know, I sat there, I guess, about where you're sitting, Coach. I sat there for several years in my capacity as a city council member. You know, I think at times, I'm not sure citizens really can't appreciate, you know, what council members, people who have to make judgments, you know, what they go through and they experience. They think maybe it's just a title, and, you know, you just get up there and you open your mouth. Well, I'm here to say, the people that I worked with, I can say very sincerely that those people gave a good deal of thought to whatever issue was being brought before them, and gave careful consideration to whatever decision they were about ready to make. And it was, it was an honor for me to be able to serve in that particular capacity. But at any rate, I appreciate the honor that you've given me tonight, and hey, I wish all of you on the city council and other city members who support our government here in the city of Stevenville to keep going. Keep going, thank you.
Dan, someone hit your family up there, take a big picture with that set of box? You can take a picture of this. Seriously, okay. No, we had a short meeting, we're gonna be on last.
This is our son Richie, our daughter Renee, and our daughter Kelly.
Okay, you're gonna have to come in a little better. There you go, that's, that's nice.
Thank you.
I have one more presentation I'm gonna make tonight. The recipients of it aren't here, but the people who asked for it, but I'll read it anyway, because it's effective today. This is Stevenville Teachers Appreciation Day proclamation. City of Stevenville's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. And teacher quality means more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. Teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. Our teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. Our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And hashtag Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than a hundred and fifty partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession, honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Now therefore, I, Doug Svein, Mayor of Stevenville, Texas, join hashtag Teachers Can in partnering with entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day, and proclaim October fifth in Stevenville to be Stevenville Teachers Day. And witness thereof, I've signed the things. Why don't you, Eric, why don't you come up here and take it, you're a teacher. You did teach once, didn't you?
It's kind of repartied.
Kind of.
Who did you work for? Those who don't know, Eric's our superintendent here. Okay, next item is general, citizen's general discussion, do you have a turn to request? Give a couple seconds, raise your hand, okay, none, go to our citizen, excuse me, regular council meeting. The first thing is I'm gonna turn it over to city council member Leanne Durfee for retail strategy branding proposal.
Yes, we'll be here for our consultant. Can you guys bring Ben in, please?
We have a consultant that's gonna zoom in and do some explanation for us.
Hey there.
Hello.
You ready for me to jump in, Leanne?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, well, thank you all, first of all, for letting me jump in. My name's Ben Muldruff, I'm a partner with Artnet Muldruff and Associates. We are working in collaboration with Retail Strategies and kind of focusing in on some of the implementation that was identified in the recent strategic plan that you all completed. Had an opportunity to come and visit the community last month, do what we call a community branding charrette, and I am thrilled to share with you all some of the recommendations that come out of it. So I'm gonna just go ahead and throw the presentation up, I want to move through this quickly, but I'm excited to share what we came up with. So, again, these are the, the concepts that we came up with, we're telling the Stevenville store, and really being able to create a system that helps you all to take better advantage of all the amazing things that the community has to offer. Obviously, as you imagine, one of the first things that we do is come in and look at some of those pre-existing identities. You all have an unbelievable sense of pride in the community, whether we're talking about the city itself, whether we're talking about that connection to the local school system, which is unbelievably strong, and just the pride behind the, the Yellow Jackets and Honeybees is unbelievable, and of course, all the connection with Charleston State, and just being able to have that Texan pride, and even the, learning about the herbal poo, and all of the amazing things that make your community who they are. What we try to do when we create a community brand system is create a platform that allows you to connect the dots and tell the whole story of the community. It's not about a single logo, it's about having all the tools to be able to have the right outfit for the right conversation, whether we're looking at economic development, historic preservation, or overall quality of life. So, we always start with developing the color palette. From there, obviously, we have certain colors that are important to the community. Obviously, we've got our, our kind of colors from our local schools, and, and there's inherent pride in those. So we wanted to make sure that those were in the palette. But then we also went out into the community, we actually took hundreds of photos and sampled those photos, and, and we saw colors that kind of repeated over and over again, whether it was, you know, the greens from some of the trees, whether it was kind of the copper patina tones, or whether it was the, the tones of the, the tiles on your courthouse roof. And together, that really created this comprehensive seven-color color palette that we felt like allowed us to connect all the pre-existing pride, and also create a palette that the community itself could own and really grow some meaning into. From there, we look at typefaces, we're actually recommending a four-typeface system for you all. This will allow us to create visual continuity as we, we tell people about who we are and what we stand for. But then, from there, we create what we call a word type. This is that primary way that we kind of tell folks who we are. One of the biggest challenges with Stevenville, obviously, you've got a ton of letters in your name. So, we wanted to select a, a typeface that had a, a little bit narrower scaling, and allowed us that opportunity to, to get our words really nice and tall. Now, from that, when we start to combine all those things together, we start out with what we call a destination brand. That destination brand is the culmination of all of those different components that we learned, whether through the digital survey, whether it was during the forty-plus people that we met in person during our onsite visit. But this really is the identity of the community as a whole. This is the brand that the business community uses to, to cultivate brand equity. This is what we use to tell our story and market all the great things that we have going on. And I'm thrilled to share with you what we landed on. What you see here, this kind of stylized icon, I'm gonna explain to you all the different meaning that's in this simple, simple, in just a moment. But then, kind of walking through this, this very, very simple phrase, I, I did a lot of research digging into cowboy culture, obviously with your place as the Cowboy Capital, and I found this amazing closing line to the cowboy prayer, which simply says, "Let's ride, my friend." And this concept of "let's ride" is such an amazing way to connect the dots between all the different opportunities that you have to not only build experiences, but share experiences together. Now, as for the icon, we feel like we've built a lot of meaning into this very, very simple icon. We've got three interlocking stars, one of which obviously represents those stars of champions. You've got a pedigree of championships in your community. You all have been using the, the five plus one stars, and then obviously, six plus one, telling the stories of your state champions with your school. We also have that representation of just this pedigree of champions and, and competitors in our rodeos and our cowboys. Obviously, we've got that connection to Charleston State and its constant performance throughout the community. We've also integrated in the county courthouse cupola, and then have it all bound in a square, symbolizing that historic square, which really is the, the physical place where we all come together. So with this, what you start to see, this overall system coming together, we have a multicolor version, we made sure that it would work in one color, made sure that it would work in reverse. And we think that this idea of "let's ride, my friend" really can expand out into telling a series of stories. We have four silos that came up over and over again, obviously, we've got that higher education, Charleston's the ride of your life, the whole story about the bill and the way that people talk about small-town life and, and being along for the ride. Obviously, that amazing story with Cowboy Capital and Wild Ride, and the city of champions, together we ride. Now, with a, a system like this, the expandability is where it really starts to grow teeth, being able to create a variation for downtown itself and telling the story of your historic square. And then even going deeper itself, creating a stylized version for the square, meet me on Brick Streets, you know, having a stylized version through the colors and typefaces connecting in that pedigree of the Cowboy Capital. And then, hearing you all talk about the bill, and kind of setting up this way that we can make that a platform to tell all of our different stories. First of all, proclaiming yourself as rodeo Bill USA, you own this more than anybody else in the country, and that's something that we should continue to be proud of. But then also, being able to connect the dots with Texanville, Championville, it creates an infinitely expandable storytelling system. Being able to tell all of those things that you all have been saying, but doing it from a platform that now creates connectivity and, and true brand extension. With this, we're also able to take this and expand it out to the city itself with a slightly cleaner version that the, the city can use, doing its business and delivering services to its constituents. The Main Street Organization, being able to use those colors and that icon to, to talk about the four-point approach to revitalization with Economic Vitality Promotion Organization behind. Then moving into visitor and tourism efforts with Visit the Bill, and even looking at things like department expansion and being able to use colors to talk about some of the amazing things and, and services that the, the city provides. We even looked at event extension, how this system can play into things like Cincoville, Farmer's Market, connecting the dots between all the different things that go on in the community. Fantastic event with Merry Christmasville that you have in downtown. And then even looking at things like how it might work in graphics on vehicles for the city delivering services, street banners, being able to tell the story and kind of creating color vibrancy around the square. Gorilla wavefinding signage to help connect the dots and create connectivity between campus and our downtown. And then even creating a, a wave of merchandise that businesses in our community can start to create true connection between people in place, and can also profit off of the affinity that people have for your community. So, we're really, really excited about how the system came together. We think that there's a tremendous amount of, of expansion and some, some real, real teeth that, that this has for you. And we're excited to hear what you think and, and see if I can answer any questions for you all tonight.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
That's pretty cool.
We were very, very excited, those of us that were in the final meeting when Ben presented it to us, it was very, we were all very excited, so.
Any questions? Turn it into our motion.
I would like to make the motion that we accept the Retail Strategies branding proposal.
Your second.
And adopt it as,
Oh.
The new city logo.
And adopt it as our new city logo.
Your second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, further discussion. If you see the vote in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir, appreciate the hard work you did.
Thank you so much, y'all have a great evening.
You too.
Next item is approval of contract for Rolex Design Inc. Who's, who's got that?
Darren.
We're Darren.
Good afternoon, good evening. So we're just asking for consideration to approve the contract with Rolex Designs tonight for Phase Two of the Inclusive Playground at City Park. We've already got Phase One in, Phase One, there's a map in there, actually, in your packet that included a picture of the original Phase One and Phase Two, we've actually made this a three-phase project right now. And then I included documentation as well that, of what Phase Three will include in the future. So, Phase Two is our, what we call our Wego Swing. The Wego Swing is a handicap-accessible swing, so any child in a wheelchair would be able to get on that swing. And there's actually handles that they use that, that make the swing go back and forth, it'll have a ramp up to it with a salt, with a hard surface, so it's a pretty cool piece of equipment. And so it'll tie the park together, it'll, it'll add a fourth area of playground equipment in, in that area of the park at Tarral Park, so.
Money for this come from?
Money for this comes from several places, so fundraising, donations from several different sources that we use, Keep Stevenville Beautiful gives money every year, and then our parkland dedication fees.
And who's the trash company?
Waste Connections is our partner with our golf tournament, it's helping us raise money for the playground.
Last year, they raised about how much, I want to give them credit for what they got.
Oh man, probably around twenty thousand with the golf tournament, they typically make a donation every year, I think of like five thousand.
And then this year, the sign language itself was, you said about thirty?
I think we'll be between twenty-five and thirty, probably, with the golf tournament this year. So we haven't received a final number today yet, I didn't hound them for a number today, but.
I know you told me not to ask you that question.
So, well, they'll, they'll give us a number this week, so we'll get a number this week from them, but yeah, we hope to be in the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar neighborhood, and then Keep Stevenville Beautiful is doing their annual raffle. They're selling raffle tickets right now, and they raised anywhere between five and seven thousand for that, so.
Great part.
We expect, we expect some more money coming in from that.
Questions for Darren?
This is just approving the expenditure that was budgeted.
Yes, we, we've approved the budget, this is just approving the expense. So this was included in the budget. Monica's ran the numbers, we're good.
Any question, other questions? Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the contract with Rolex Design for then, installation of Phase Two of the Inclusive Playground at City Park.
Second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Pulling number three from the agenda, so we're gonna plan a zoning commission. So Steve's gonna be up, and of course, everybody said they want to get out here early, and I said, but look at what Steve brought to us.
Yes, sir, I stepped up tonight, wanted to make sure I gave you your money, so. Pardon me, trying to get through this without coughing on everyone. Mayor Council, first case we won't have for you is PD 2023 dash zero zero two. Applicant Ben Sanchez and Landon Bell, they're here tonight, they're with Park Hill, representing Stevenville ISD, requesting a rezone of the property at Wolf Nursery. This is block one. This is block 156, lot seven, part of lot seven. It's in the, it's city addition, it's currently zoned city Charleston School, and they're asking that it be rezoned to a planned development. Of course, this is for the stadium that we're all excited about. And in this, basically what we're looking for in this planned development is they have five deviations from code that we'll be approving if the development plan is approved. And let me get to my notes here. We have five of those, wrong email. I apologize, I had that just before I got up here. So the first one, of course, is the parking. They are asking that we, they're proposing 1,686 parking spaces. The code would generally require one space for every four seats in the stadium. They have a 7,700-seat stadium, so that would be roughly 1,925 seats that would be required for the parking. They're going to be able to accommodate 1,686. That will be approximately 6,744 seats that can be accommodated with the parking that they can build currently. They will have a Phase Two that will add the remainder seats, and they will do that when they get to a certain point of ticket sales and construct those parking spaces to make sure that we are not ever to the point where they have more ticket sales than the actual seating would allow or the parking spaces would allow. They had also, of course, the stadium with the height limitations across the city, being at 35 feet, they're going to have certain portions of the stadium that will well exceed that, so they're asking for some deviations on the height requirements. Parking, or I'm sorry, landscaping, they meet the landscaping requirement as far as the number of, or the percentage of landscaping that's required. They are planting well beyond what we require. But what they are not able to do is they can't have the parking medians landscaped because that would cut into the number of parking spaces. So they'll have landscaping all around the perimeter. They have a very detailed landscape plan that they've submitted to us. Street lighting was another, what they listed as a deviation, that's not necessarily a deviation because street lighting already exists, it's just that they're not being required to put it in. So they did list that in full transparency. We've been working with Park Hill, they have been working very closely with our Public Works Department. They are nearly complete on their civil review comments. I know that they met as early as yesterday to work through some of the differences, and I believe the drainage aspect of this, which has been a very large concern, is nearly to the point of agreement. And they have worked hard and diligently with our city team to get to that point. We did have at the last planning and zoning meeting, the public hearing, we had two people show up to speak in opposition. And really, it was more of a question-answer type discussion than it was full opposition. There were some people that have concerned about the noise and the lighting and things of that nature. We've asked that they, in their presentation to P&amp;Z, they did illustrate that the lighting intensity at the adjacent properties will be below what the requirement is for the intensity of that lighting. So with that, P&amp;Z voted six to one at the last meeting to recommend that the council approve the development plan. I think just one point I would want to make is that the development plan, what we're asking for approval for here tonight, would be not just the rezoning and development plan, but it's specific, the only deviations they're requesting are listed in this report. They're not asking for any deviations beyond that. So they do have drainage sheets and additional documentation in the packet, but they're not asking for any deviations from that. It's only the ones that we have specifically listed. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And of course, Ben and Landon are here as well if you need further information.
Questions for Steve?
I've got one. I mean, Steve, you can tackle it, but maybe Nick would be better suited here. There's been a lot of conversation about the drainage issue on that piece of property.
Yes, sir. I'd certainly prefer to defer to Mr. Nick, if you don't mind.
So if you don't mind, Nick, would you just kind of give us an outline or skeletal figure of where we stand on that drainage right now?
Well, in full disclosure, it's a complicated site. And so we have been working very diligently with Park Hill and our drainage team at Freese Nichols. Dr. Cedarstrom and his staff have been great to work with as well. We think that we've identified a very clear path forward that helps prevent those folks downstream from being flooded. So we're confident that there's a way to make this work, and we'll hammer out those details during the final design review process.
Okay, and some of the questions that I heard at P&amp;Z were from the people uphill, upstream, and about that water coming across their place and then entering this property. So that's all...
Right. That's part of the review process. We certainly want to make sure that that water doesn't back up into those people's homes as well. So we are absolutely looking at that, making sure that's a consideration, so that will not happen.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just, the parking, the Phase Two parking, what is the, is it a cost analysis situation? What's the reason behind waiting? Because that doesn't seem like a great solution to have to walk across the street.
Yes, sir. I believe the biggest hurdle there is being able to find those additional spaces. It's 239.
Let me take this one.
Okay.
I'm the one that asked them to do the PD so that we could phase it in that way.
Because parking has been an issue in this community.
Yes, but at present, what they're able to have between onsite and limb rock far exceeds our highest capacity football games over the last several years, highest capacity game.
With limb rock?
Yes.
Okay.
But almost all of that you could do on the site they're building. We've had, the highest capacity games have been 5,200 people.
Which accounts for how many cars?
One space for every four, so 1,300 roughly, yeah.
Okay, so we have enough onsite.
If you use limb rock, what's it put you at?
1,600 and something. Overall, in the whole plan, the master plan portion's like another 250 spaces, I think. 239. And so it's a small portion. And in talking to Dr. Cedarstrom and the Park Hill staff, when you're trying to divvy up the money that you got, it just seemed like we can kind of slow roll a little bit into that until we're using that amount of capacity here. You know, the outlook, the attendance of the games is telling us we need to go ahead and get that built.
What would be the mechanism?
We've written some of that in there. I don't remember what we decided on, guys.
It was an average of ticket sales or average attendance for five games or something, had a certain number. And once it averaged that, then they would put it in the Phase Two, is what I remember from P&amp;Z.
I believe the threshold was like 95% when they would begin Phase Two of the parking, 95% of the total seating.
95% of what?
Of the seating, space availability. So if they're selling 95% of the 7,700, then that would trigger building the additional parking spaces. Is that correct?
There were two triggers.
So we get your record, you'll cover it, and Mac, why don't introduce who you are?
Good evening. My name is Landon Bell with Park Hill. We had two trigger points for the ticket sales that related to that percentage of parking. The first trigger was relative to the average ticket sales of a given year. When the average ticket sales of a given year reaches 80%, what 80%? That number was the trigger point. Or if it reached 95% as the peak of three consecutive years. So the peaks are generally hit just one or two games a season. That's why we looked at three years for that versus the average of one year being 80%. So those were the two trigger points. If either one of those are hit, that's the trigger point for building Phase Two.
And so from a feasibility standpoint, building Phase Two now wrecks the project? Or...
The drainage for the site can find or define where would be most convenient to build the stadium and the parking we have, because we've got a large channel that's bisecting the site right in the middle, and then the FEMA floodway is kind of on that eastern third. And so we fit as many parking spaces as we could in that lower third. The Phase Two parking is north of the channel, which requires us to construct large culverts, drainage structures underneath them, and pedestrian crossings to get across it. So it's kind of everything combined. It's not just a parking lot, it's all of the infrastructure to get you from the parking to the actual stadium. So all that combined with the budget that we have, that was how we kind of drew the line.
So the stadium holds 7,700? And so on the site of the stadium, I've been through this many times when we built the stadium, what is, how many parking spaces do you have within the stadium lot? Again, you say how many?
So the Phase One...
Phase One.
Parking includes 1,686. 1,686 is using...
Is that just counting?
About 1,200 spaces on the site, and then it's grabbing another 400 spaces at the middle school.
Across the street.
Correct.
Okay, and so I was going to say, I thought maybe that hadn't counted the middle school. So you're counting the middle school in that too. So if you have a sellout of 7,700, you're going to have about 1,600 spots.
Is there an ordinance precluding street parking on Frye or Wolf Nursery?
Yes, well, there's no shoulders. It's, yeah, they're...
Well, as we can tell from a Charleston game day, shoulders don't matter. But, I mean, I digress.
Were you one of those rental houses?
Yeah. So who's monitoring, going to be monitoring these trigger points? And who's going to say when they're required to build Phase Two?
I think that we stay in good contact with the district. As you know, we have all kinds of our staff at those games as well. And so I think we'll all be able to stay in communication and be able to kind of pre-plan when that's going to be. My hope would be that we have to build it sooner rather than later, because that means more folks are using and coming to the new stadium.
Are we going to be, have our staff helping the crosswalk there across Frye?
My hope is that we don't have to have any staff there. That's, and that's part of our discussion, is like HAWK systems that are signalized pedestrian crossings that are designed so you don't have to have police officers or other staff members there. That's...
Be like Washington where we cross from the baseball field and cross to the stadium.
Well, that's a full-blown traffic signal. A HAWK system would be a temporary, it works as a temporary red light, but...
But you'd have a crosswalk like that.
Probably a couple of them along that path to ease people across there.
Who establishes the number of parking spaces?
It's written in our development code. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So for a stadium, it's one parking space for every four people.
Can establish their own ratio?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We're pretty much in line with the other cities as well.
From experience, I know that in Austin, you're lucky if you get a parking place within seven blocks of the stadium, so...
If I may add one thing, I did share this site plan with our police department. You know, they will generally be the ones out directing traffic after the games, and Captain Walker was very pleased with the site plan, and I think he was, he was called me and actually had a lot of positive things to say about it. So, you know, support Mr. King and the fact that I think we've got several years to get to that threshold and that allow the school to prepare to do that Phase Two.
Is there sidewalks from Gilbert up to where the stadium will be, where there'd be more parking at Gilbert?
I think there's a little bridge. I think there's a little bridge that cuts through.
I'm just thinking, there's more parking over there, too. If you had to extend parking, I mean, it's a little walk, but everybody's got to walk to games anymore. That would be a possibility to have more parking over there if you had to go into the, I mean, there's parking there also. I'll tell you, it's old. Just saying, there's more parking there.
Good point. Yes, sir.
So out of these parking spots, how many, we have designated bus parking?
Yes, sir, we do. That's in the, let me see if I can get to, an illustration that has that. They have bus parking more than what I initially thought. So I believe they can accommodate up to 14 buses on their site plan, and I believe that's on page, maybe 132 will show that in the packet. And sorry, I don't have that in your PowerPoint, but they do have adequate bus parking for the Steenfield ISD and then the visiting team as well.
Anybody else?
Not to get off parkey, but something that was brought to me was the pond, the drainage pond.
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be security, not security, but fence or some sort of way of preventing people from getting into the pond? Or that was just a concern that was brought up to me, and I just wanted to ask.
We have discussed that in most of our meetings, and I believe the school district also shares that concern. So we will continue that discussion, we'll make sure that, you know, the safety features are there as needed.
Would that be something we can add to this P&amp;Z approval?
Yes, sir. I believe the council can certainly add that as part of the development plan. It's PD approval, absolutely.
Eric, I'll give you an opportunity. You want to jump up and address it? You're working at, we'll give you some time to talk about the plan if you want to. I know you weren't prepared to, but it's what they paid super news to get up there and do.
Two times in one day.
That's right. That's exactly right.
No, I just want to appreciate, or express my appreciation to the council for considering this plan. There's been a lot of hard work put into it. I know City Manager King and his staff have put a ton of stuff into time and effort into working with us to make this project worth. You know, it's, you're dealt the hand that you get, the property that we have, and we make the best of it, and I think it's going to be a fantastic project. And obviously, we look at safety and security for all our kids and all our visitors. So yes, we'll make sure we continue to work on fencing and monitoring and traffic and lighting, and all the things that make a great facility a great facility, so we can be proud to brand it accordingly. Look forward to it.
Any questions for Eric?
I'd love to answer any.
Well, I don't know if it's for you or for the other gentleman. It just made me think, whenever we talk about bus parking.
Yes, sir.
And maybe there's a rule for it. Did they have to park onsite, or could they not park across the street? Because wouldn't that free up a lot of parking spots if there wasn't, I mean, a...
It's actually up over there, the stadium itself.
It's parked on the backhand side of it. Basically, it's designed that way. It's just a convenience factor, because if you're unloading and unloading, I mean, you don't want to have to be fighting traffic to come in and pick up kids to exit the facility or not, so...
Most schools have a park on right by the stadium.
Yep. Trying to stay out of individual cars' lanes, I guess, more than anything.
And it's, and also, you want to get the safety of, you don't want to cross the street after a game. If it's a close game, you've got, you have some problems right there. You want to stay away from the crowds.
Sounds like a voice of experience.
Yes. Learned a lot.
Yes.
Anybody else?
You're parking it, yeah.
Anybody have a question, Steve or Eric, for Park Hill?
So, I mean, would you have a problem building some kind of a fencing structure around the additional pond?
I certainly think we can look at how we want to do that and make sure it's secure like all our facilities.
So, well, I guess, well, I guess we can discuss that as a group, but I think, is that a feasibility cost make or break point? I mean, so if I'm understanding right, it becomes unfeasible cost-wise to build the additional parking currently based on the bond that was issued? Is that correct?
I think I'll answer that question and say that I think we're maximizing every dollar we have that the voters have authorized us to build the stadium with. And I think we're being very diligent and purposeful with the money that we've been allocated. I mean, we've been entrusted with this money to do the best product we possibly can. If fencing is part of that, then yes, we've already got fencing other places.
Okay. Anybody else? Here now, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number PD 2023-002.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Does anybody want to come and speak in favor or in opposition to the proposal? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at Wolf Nursery Road, parcel R 64240, block, being blocked 156, lot seven, part of the 42.93 acres, S 2600, City of Steenfield Edition, Erev County, Texas, from City Charleston School, and into a planned development. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we approve ordinance number 2023-028, rezoning the land...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh dash twenty-eight, rezoning the land described as CTS to planned development as presented.
Have a motion as second. Further discussion?
I mean, is the detention pond something that, how, how deep is it? I mean, what kind of a structure are we talking about?
We'll have to finalize that during the design. We have a rough outline of it, but that's about all that's been presented while they're modeling the waters.
Can you say something about that, Justin?
Well, I just, I think if, I mean, if it is a potential, I mean, I know there'll be fencing around the stadium itself, correct? In terms of nobody can, can't just walk into a football stadium, right? So, if that were a, a safety concern, I think that's something.
Yeah, there's, there's really nice fencing design around the entire stadium. And then they also have fencing on the north side to prevent people from cutting through the neighborhood onto the campus. So,
Good.
They have chain, six-foot fence proposed on the north side as well, so.
That keeps people off of it from there, but I guess they could access it from Frye or Wolf Nursery.
Yes, sir, onto the property, but not into the stadium itself.
Okay. Have a motion as second of the four. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, case number SV twenty twenty-three zero zero one. We're gonna pick them up, Steve.
Yes, sir. Uh, next one is property that we've been working on for quite a while with Mr. Manuel Glockson. He is requesting a sidewalk waiver. This is for the property out on Highway eight. It is, um, he's requesting a variance to, or I'm sorry, a waiver to section one fifty-five point six point eleven. Um, this is for sidewalk requirements. It is seven point six six four acres at the Menifee Harrett Abstract, city of Stevensville. He's having to come to us for this instead of going through the staff level review because it has not been platted. So, he is requesting this waiver for the sidewalk. Met with, with Mr. Glockson and Public Works, and we did, um, staff did recommend that the waiver be denied to P and Z. And P and Z did agree that, and recommend that the city council by a vote of six to one, that the sidewalk waiver be denied. With that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Here now, question under a public hearing and see if there's anybody wants to come and speak in opposition or in favor of the proposal. Here now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of subdivision waiver from section one five five point six point one one sidewalk requirements. Do I hear a motion? If we, since P and Z turned it down, do we have to vote no tonight or can we just, what is the required vote tonight?
Just a majority vote.
No, I mean, is it, the, the vote is to approve the request?
It's the, the recommend-
So, we're gonna, where the approval would be to override P and Z. Is that what you're saying, Randy?
I'm saying that, that you're gonna approve whatever they ask for.
Okay, so, okay.
So, basically, a motion in support of the P and Z recommendation to, to deny.
Well, that's my, that's my point. Now, I wanna make sure we're okay with that. That's, because I don't think we're saying the same thing. And I may be wrong. So, if we vote for it tonight, we're, we're supporting P and Z to not allow the waiver.
No.
Denied the waiver would be the motion.
Yeah, you just make a different motion. You make the motion to deny or approve.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, do I hear a motion?
And to be consistent, Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny this subdivision waiver request.
Second. Have a motion as second. And for the discussion, see to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Case number SV twenty twenty-three zero zero two.
Yes, sir. Same property, same ownership. This is for the curb and, curb and gutter. Recommendation here by planning and zoning on September twentieth was unanimous vote, seven to zero, recommending the city council approve the waiver request.
Any requests were approved, okay. Questions for Steve?
So, Steve, the difference here being that the, the drop-off along that, that road presents the same problems that we've seen in, in times past.
Yes, sir. That's, that's a major portion of it. And we did, now, this is, you know, something that Public Works, we, we meet with Public Works and make sure that they support these requests before we bring them to you, or if they don't support them. So, we vetted that with Public Works. But I would like to also say that we work with Tech dot very closely now. And they have indicated to us that they really don't desire to have curb and gutter on their state highways because they don't know exactly how it's gonna affect their projects in the future. So, it's, it's fully supported through staff and Tech dot.
I just wanna make a comment there. Our city manager's done a good job helping us get a great relationship with the highway department, working with him good, well.
Absolutely.
Question, other question for Steve? Here now, we're going to a public hearing. Anyone wanna come speak in favor or opposition of case number SV twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of wa, the subdivision waiver for section one one, one five five point six oh four M curb and gutter requirements. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the waiver of the curb and gutter as presented here.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Further discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, Steve.
Yes, sir. This case CP twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one is conditional use permit request by Mr. Thomas and Xana Gill. Uh, they're requesting the, the permit to allow the construction of a, a parking lot at fourteen ninety West McNeil in the South Side Edition, blocks six, lot one A, B, two A, two, three, four, and five. So, this is basically west of the cemetery on Lilian Street. It has McNeil on one side and along on the other. It's right there on the corner. You might recognize it with the Lone Star, or the, I'm sorry, the gas station, Atmos Station there on the corner of the parcel. Charlton owns a parcel right to the north of it. And so, we spoke with the city attorney and we believe under the conditional use permit, five point six point C, number two, this can be approved as a common facility as a principal use of one or more platted lots in the subdivision. And so, since Charlton has that lot directly north, we feel it can connect here. They're working with Mr. Gill currently under negotiations on the construction of this parking lot. As you know, it would allow quite a bit of relief in the area for our Charlton students and then even those that will be visiting future retail spaces. So, staff supports the conditional use permit. And also, when the planning and zoning convened last night, it was a unanimous vote to move forward and recommend the city council approve the conditional use permit. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve?
So, Steve, if this is approved here tonight, the conditional use permit will terminate when the lease on the property, you said it was a short-term lease, I think I heard you say.
Yeah, yes, sir. Not, the, the term has not been fully negotiated, but staff would recommend that the permit be extended for the duration of whatever agreement they, they settle on, which is currently, I believe, five to seven years. And Mr. Gill is here to provide any answers to, or any additional detail that's needed.
So, did, Mark's point, can we tie the conditional use to the term of lease?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Yes. Or if it doesn't happen at all, if, for whatever reason, say their negotiations fall apart, then the permit wouldn't be any good. You, you tie the conditional use to the-
To a signed lease.
Strictly to a signed lease with Charlton State University for the purpose of parking.
I'm sure, Woody, you have, uh, future plans for this once. You don't want it to be a parking lot forever, right?
Come up to the microphone. Tell us who you are.
Um, you're right, David. I did have future plans, economy. Everybody knows what's going on. So, we perceived this, when Charlton approached us back in late May, early June, we perceived this as a win-win-win for city, for Charlton, for us as well. To your point, sir, uh, yes. Lease terminates or never comes to fruition, no conditional use. I don't plan to be in the parking lot.
No, thank you, Ed.
Is there any other questions?
Questions for Woody?
Any other questions?
Appreciate you, sir. Thank you for, for coming. We'll enter a public hearing on the proposal. If anyone wanna come speak in favor or in opposition. Here now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of conditional use permits for property located at fourteen ninety West McNeil, R thirty-three, four ninety, being South Side Edition, block six, one A, one B, two, two A, three, four, five, and part of one B, city of Stevensville, Tech. Do I hear a motion?
I'm gonna ask the question again before we do this.
Okay.
Do we need to, as a part of the motion, have this-
Tied to.
Conditional use permit tied directly to the lease?
As part of the motion.
Yes, yeah.
So, as part of the motion.
City manager says yes, and I'm not gonna disagree.
So, given that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this conditional use permit at the location indicated and tie it directly to a, an executed lease agreement.
And for, and include the duration.
At Charlton State University and for the duration of that lease agreement.
Yes, sir. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion as second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Woody. Appreciate you doing that.
Mayor, council, I think that was it for Development Services. Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna turn it over now to Matty Smith.
Well, I'm gonna throw you for a loop because we have two applicants for planning and zoning who were not able to make the committee meetings. And we, we have to interview them, so I'm gonna put them in front of the committee meeting, committee meeting court. Do I do this separately, one at a time?
Separately, okay.
The first applicant is Bonnie Terrell. If you'll come up to the microphone. And she has applied for alternate one on planning and zoning committee. So, if you'll just state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Bonnie Terrell. I reside at two seventy-nine West Collins here in Stevensville.
So, one of the questions I have for you is, what is your reason for wanting to serve on the committee?
I, my desire is to serve the community in any way I'm asked. Um, I'm currently a board member on Habitat for Humanity, and we like to empower people through housing. And I feel, I'm also a Realtor, and I know being connected to the community is very important and being knowledgeable about the community. And if I'm asked to serve, I'm happy to do so.
And then have you served on any other city boards or committees?
I have not.
And then are you also available on the regular scheduled meeting, which is the third Wednesday of the month?
Yes.
Does anybody have, have you questions for Bonnie? Bonnie says I'm new at this.
You can make a motion to, to approve her.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve Bonnie Terrell for alternate one on planning and zoning.
Second. Have a motion as second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second applicant I have for planning and zoning alternate two is gonna be Justin Sloss, sorry. Justin, if you don't mind. And just like Bonnie, do you just your name and your address, please, sir?
Uh, Justin Sloss at nine oh eight East Washington.
And they're gonna have the same three questions that Bonnie had.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the reason for you wanting to serve on this committee?
So, you guys know, I, I like to be involved in, in, in city decisions. I, I've lived here all, all but one year of my forty-five years. And, and I just think that we need, not just me, we need more people to be involved with, with city decisions and stay informed. And even like, like, I noticed what Mr. Patronis said, that we, we, a lot of us, we think you guys just make decisions without you go along to get along. But I, after coming here, I, I see that, that you, you really put thought in your decisions. And, and as someone that might get to help with that, I like to be involved and put thought in decision and understand what's going on in the community. So, I would take this position very seriously, and I would give the same due diligence in these decisions.
And then have you ever served on any city board or committee before?
No, ma'am.
And then are you also available on the regular scheduled meeting time on the third?
Absolutely.
So, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Justin Sloss for planning and zoning alternate D two.
The motion as our second? Motion as second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Thanks, sir.
Thank you all so much for willingness to serve our community. We really do appreciate it. Other thing from our committee meeting that happened on September nineteenth was we had a resignation on, resignation on planning and zoning seat one. And we voted to move Tyler Wright, who was in the alternate position, to the place one on, um, planning and zoning. But he was just moving from alternate to seat one. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Wright's move from alternate to seat one. Second.
Have a motion as second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. McClintock?
Mr. Mayor, Public Works Committee met on nineteenth September. Two items on the agenda. Both of the items that we discussed had to do with change orders for major construction projects that are happening right now. The first one was on Harbin Drive. There are three specific change orders that, um, that we need to move forward. This is, anytime you get involved in a big construction project, there are gonna be changes that have to be made for whatever reason. And, and this is what this represents. This is just the normal course of doing large construction projects. Except on this one, and I wanna point this out because on this particular project, there were some, there were some instances of oversight or overlooking pieces of this project that happened from the beginning. And I asked that question specifically during the committee meeting. And Mr. King and Mr. Williams combined with a, a pathway forward for the city of Stevensville that hopefully we won't have anything too far out of the ordinary as we move forward. But I've asked Mr. Williams, if you don't mind, sir, if you would just briefly discuss the three specific changes on Harbin that we're talking about here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So, there are six total change orders. What we're seeking is approval of four, five, and six that was recommended at the last committee meeting. Before I get into that, I wanna make sure that everybody knows that that third change order was the, the large one from Charlton, the, the five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar one where Charlton graciously agreed to, to take care of relocating the storm sewer that was going in Charl, Charlton Street. Change order number four was just over fifty-four thousand dollars. That was the replacement of water lines in, water lines and sewer lines in Harbin. So, when the design was made, uh, some of those water lines were captured, but they were only captured in Harbin. They were not captured in any of the side streets. Well, when you have twelve-inch and sixteen-inch water lines, that adds up very quickly when you start to look at the valves, the fittings, the fire hydrants, and those things that go with it. So, that was just simply one of those things that Mr. McClintock mentioned that was missed in the design. Change order number five was a combination of three things. It started out with a very large savings in the signalization. When, when we make modifications to Harbin, we're making modifications to the signalization of the intersections at Washington and the Senator J Glasgow loop. When we did that, we found that there was about a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in savings. And what we said was, well, because the design did not incorporate lighting in the medians, nor did it incorporate irrigation, we went to offset those two things. And including illumination and irrigation, uh, it was a thirty-two thousand dollar increase. And so, we thought that was still a good trade for the signalization discount that we got. Change order number six was just over forty-four thousand dollars, and that was a change in the type of pavement. So, we went from something that was a standalone curb and gutter to something called a monolithic curb and gutter where it's poured all this one piece. And that's exactly what, what we needed it to be. That actually resulted in a cost savings. The problem was, again, in the design, the quantity of that paving was not accurately captured. And in our case, it was captured on the low end. And so, had they estimated it high, we'd be having a different conversation, but they estimated the number low. Those are the three change orders that were-
Questions for Nate?
Well, I just wanna point out that the money for this does exist. We're in the street budget-
Yes, sir.
Approved line item for, for street maintenance. That's where this, the money for these change orders for this project is, is coming out of. So, the money does exist for this. And with that, I would like to move that we approve the change orders number four, five, and six on the Harbin Drive street improvement project as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second. Do you have a question?
Well, I just, I think, maybe expand on the remediation process that we are making some changes to who we are gonna do business with on a go-forward basis.
Absolutely. So, I think as Mr. King, and if you wanna tackle it again, you're welcome to, or I will, doesn't matter.
Yes, the city of Stevensville is currently looking for a new full-service engineering firm.
And I think this miss was large enough and egregious enough that it, I mean, it certainly warrants that.
We've had this situation happen once before.
We have.
About ten years ago, with another, another firm, what was- About ten years ago, with another, another firm, what was that? Oh, we didn't have the names, we did the same thing as when we went to these current contractor.
And we've officially terminated our contracts, but it was freezing the first crack.
Well, we've got to finish out the projects that we're on, but, uh, as we do new projects, we'll utilize new companies, Nick's, uh, we met with a firm last week, well, some of us were in Dallas, and so he's kind of putting together an RFQ right now.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we'll have somebody pick for all of that work, plus drainage reviews and, and all of those things. So, yes, as, as we wind down these projects, that relationship will go away.
Any other questions? Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, second item agenda, uh, again, involves change order. This one was totally unforeseen and unforeseeable, uh, relates to the east side sewer interceptor, and just for a second, I want to say, you've probably driven by the park, you can see the open trench going in, that's a part of that interceptor project, had a chance to go with Nick and Barbara, uh, a couple of weeks ago. There's actually three areas of construction, this is a major undertaking, there's three areas of construction. One at the headworks, that's a horizontal boring, uh, drilling operation, and then the one that you see at the city park that's open trench, and then the old-school one is just south of the south loop, as they're trying to pass into the park under that overpass, that, they are digging by hand. So this is a large construction project that is going on, and, uh, the, the guys are just phenomenal. The, the process they've got going under the river is, is just amazing, right now. But, they found a hiccup, didn't they?
They did.
Okay, you want to talk about it?
Absolutely, I do. And I don't know if we can get to that in the, in the agenda packet, but I did include that same report that we had at the committee meeting, and again, the, those pictures, just, they tell the story better than you could ever put it into words. We found a, a massive, uh, concrete structure, and somebody asked me earlier today, how do you not know that that's there? Well, we didn't know it was there. The folks that operate the plant, and there's been a gentleman that's been there since the nineteen eighties, and you would think that they would have some of that institutional knowledge, no, had no idea it was there. When we started to open up the, the earth, right, there it is. When we started to open up the earth, uh, ten to twenty feet down, we found this concrete structure, and it's called an M H O F tank, it was part of a treatment process that predates the round clarifiers that you see out at the treatment plant today. And so, because it's an older technology, a lot of times, you'll see things, for instance, at the rec hall, when you don't have, uh, structural calculations or software to check you, you'll see a lot of the older developments and older construction projects where the concrete and the rebar just double and triple the size, well, that's exactly what they did here. Those pictures that you see there really don't do it justice, there, there's a hydraulic hammer on the end of that excavator. Contractor was lucky enough to find one in Tulsa, Oklahoma, they had it delivered, to put a, uh, put a hammer on it, and they literally had to beat it apart, and then take it out piece by piece, so they could lay the new line through there. But again, this, this east side interceptor sewer is a piece of infrastructure that's gonna service this community for over a century, so we had no choice but to get this part right.
Where can return investment at, Justin?
Hundred years?
They got their money, sir.
Any questions for Nick on that?
No choice, no choice.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the, um, change order for the east side sewer interceptor project as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, second, see to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Just, Nick, just mention, I've had some people ask projects, sewers twenty-one million, is that what the science is?
Twenty-two five.
Twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
So twenty-two, we've got a twelve million dollar street project in Harbin, so we're at thirty-three, thirty-four.
Right.
And Long Street is-
That was seven and a half, right?
Let's save you some time, Mayor, all in, about seventy-three.
So we have seventy-three million dollars of construction going right now, appreciate your supervision of all that, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Doing a good job.
That is the end of my committee report, sir.
Mr. Haskin?
Uh, the finance committee met on September nineteenth to discuss and approve audit proposals for audit services beginning fiscal year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, city of Steenville requested proposals for audit services for that fiscal year, with the option of renew annually over the next four years. Four proposals were received and evaluated, based on the evaluation, uh, Bachelor Morgan and Young CPAs was, proposal was chosen as the successful proposal. It, uh, was unanimously voted with a positive recommendation to council, and I will make that recommendation a form of a motion.
A motion, or a second? Who's it, David, you did it?
Mark.
Mark did? Further discussion?
Uh, just, I guess, for public record, um, we did discuss independence, um, so Bachelor Morgan and Young CPA is, uh, CPA firm owned by five individuals, um, one of them not myself. B M Y Financial Services, Inc. is a, is a standalone corporation, and that is owned solely by me. There is no, um, reciprocal or, um, agreement of revenue sharing of any kind. Besides breaking federal laws, um, that is just, uh, not the case at all. We do rent space from Bachelor Morgan and Young CPA, so, but that does not impair their independence with the city of Steenville.
Thank you for that clarification. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Haskin?
Um, the staff also presented the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion was made and seconded to forward the fee schedule as presented to full council with a positive recommendation. Um, the city council, let's see, then adopted that in the special council meeting that same day.
Thanks, sir.
And that ends the committee report, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Harris? We got two council members that need to leave here in a minute.
Yep.
Bum. Get you over there. Okay.
I was hoping I could sneak out early.
Uh, you did.
This is a financial statement review for August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, uh, eleven months into the fiscal year. Uh, again, we're, we're pretty much overall as or better than we anticipated. Property taxes is about the only thing that we're kind of low on, we received fifteen thousand in the month of August, um, which, uh, caused us to have four hundred and forty-two thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. And we're at ninety-seven percent of our budget, but that's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand less than what we would have anticipated. And we received seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand in sales tax in August, that's a million dollars or thirteen percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date, we're at ninety-six percent of our budget, and that's about four hundred and seventeen thousand higher than we anticipated. Of the forty-two point nine million revenue received to date, fifty-one percent was received in the general fund, twenty-seven percent was received in the water, wastewater fund, and six percent was received in our landfill fund. We received almost a hundred percent of our total budgeted revenues through August, um, that's three point three million more than anticipated due to taxes, charges for services, um, other revenue, um, such as our investment income donations and our debt proceeds. We've received twenty-two point three million less in revenue than, um, through August of last fiscal year to date, and that's due to the debt proceeds that we received last fiscal year. When you exclude those, we received one point six million more in taxes, six hundred and thirty-three thousand more in intergovernmental, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand more in charges for services than last fiscal year to date. Of the fifty-four point seven million spent to date, forty-five percent was expended in the water wastewater fund, thirty-seven percent was expended in our general fund, eight percent was expended in our capital projects fund, and four percent was expended in the landfill fund. We've expended sixty percent of our total budgeted expenditures through August, and that's about twenty-six point five million less than anticipated, that's due to some salary savings, um, contractual, and then obviously, some of our, uh, capital outlay, uh, as we have those projects. Some of them will obviously carry over into this next fiscal year. We've spent fifteen million more in expenditures through August than last year to date, and the bulk of that obviously is our capital outlay. CEDA has received an overall hundred and two percent of their budgeted revenue through August, and that's seventeen thousand more than last year to date, and seventy-six thousand more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes and interest income. CEDA has spent an overall forty-four percent of their budgeted expenditures through August, that's three hundred and eighty thousand more than last year to date, um, and that's due to personnel and grant dispersments, but it's eight hundred and seventy-two thousand less than we anticipated, and that's due to capital outlay and grant dispersments, the capital outlay will carry forward into this next fiscal year.
Questions for Monica? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you.
Thank you.
City manager, comments?
Consent.
Oh, consent.
Consent.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve consent as presented.
Second. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, comments by city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, we had a good month of September, event-wise, uh, we had Family Weekend and lots of events downtown, and last weekend, we had our last farmer's market for the season, combined with the rollout of the new police radio system. There was a ton of folks downtown, uh, so I'll say thanks to all of our staff that's, that's worked hard, getting all that cleaned up, and, and make sure it all got pulled off. Uh, we have a charter election, uh, that's coming up in November, uh, remind everybody that election day will be November seventh. Early voting will take place from October twenty-third through October twenty-seventh, will be the first week, and then Monday, October thirtieth, to Friday, November third, uh, and you can find all that information on the Eret County Clerk's website. But I just want to remind everybody about voting, and that's all I have, sir.
Ms. Durfee?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out for the branding meetings, and, and-
Mr. Haskin?
No comment.
Mr. Reese? No comment. Bobby? No comment.
Um, two weeks ago, the Steenville Police Department and the ISP hosted a bonfire at the city park, and I just want to say thank you to Darren and his Parks Department for working with our bonfire committee, and then the Fire Department and Police Department for being there and keeping everybody safe, and thing went off without a hitch and perfect, so I appreciate all y'alls' hard work for that, thank you.
David?
Uh, I want to say congratulations to Judge Patronis again for, uh, on his retirement, as well as, uh, James Grisham is for his retirement from, uh, the Steenville Police Department. Uh, has been with us for a long, long time, is gonna go and, uh, mold young minds and, uh, and young police officers that hopefully will become the Steenville as well, and I just want to say good luck to James.
Mark?
No comment, sir.
In compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Medias Law, subchapter D, Government Code, ver. in Texas Code, annotated according to Section five five one dot oh seven four, personal matters to deliver the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dis, discipline, and/or dismissal of public officer or employee to whip the municipal judge. We'll be back.